I've called this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll call?
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which we stand unafraid, under God, with peace, justice, and all.
Well, before we get down to business, we just, I have to comment. Are we not in a beautiful room? So, thank you to our Clerk of Courts, our Clerk of the Commission, for leading this project. It's just absolutely beautiful. And I hope that the technology and the sound and the lighting will all be that much more conducive to us having excellent weekly meetings. So, thank you, Emily. All right, first up is the County Engineer.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's three resolutions today for the County Engineers' Office. Resolution six, approve the 2021 County Highway System Mileage Certification Report as prepared by the Director of the High Department of Transportation. Resolution seven, advertise for the Mad River Alex Bell Improvement Project, Washington Township, at an estimated cost of $880,000. Resolution eight, accept Butler Township's payment for the resurfacing of various township roads as part of the 2020-2022 Asphalt Concrete Resurfacing Program, countywide, in an amount not to exceed $255,574.
I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Clerk of Courts?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Clerk of Courts, we have Resolution nine, approve the elective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, AFL-CIO Ohio. Council eight, Local 101, the Dayton Public Service Union, through December 31st, 2024.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Prosecutor?
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Montgomery County Prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., we have three special prosecutor's agreements that need to be extended through this year, 2022. The first one is Resolution 22-0010, as with Cindy Westwood, Attorney at Law, to act as Special Prosecuting Attorney in providing legal counsel to the Humane Society of Greater Dayton in an amount not to exceed $1,000. Resolution 0011 is with Brenda A. Weemer of Dinsmore &amp; Shoal LLP to act as Special Prosecuting Attorney in providing legal counsel and assistance to Montgomery County, including but not limited to the Board of County Commissioners, the Office of Management and Budget, and any individual governmental members thereof in an amount not to exceed $10,000. And finally, Resolution 0012 with Mark Evans of the Law Firm of Booker &amp; Eckler LLC to act as Special Prosecuting Attorney in providing legal counsel to the Board of County Commissioners, Environmental Services, and any individual governmental members thereof in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
I move for approval. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court?
Good afternoon, thank you, Commissioners. We have one resolution today, Resolution 0013, authorize an agreement with Case Western Reserve University for evaluation services for the family treatment for an amount not to exceed $10,791 through September 29th, 2022.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Administrator and the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on December 21st, 2021. Resolution 14, approval of bills. Resolution 15, approval of travel and expenses. Resolution 16, accept the 2021 annual inventory for the Animal Resource Center, Automatic Data Processing Center, Clerk of Commission, County Municipal Court, Law Library Resources, Record Centers and Archives, and Treasurers. Under Resolution 14 and 15, both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services?
Thank you, Commissioners. I have several for your consideration today. The first is 17, the Approval of Personnel Actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 18 is authorizing a Technical Services Agreement with Logan County Sheriff's Office for access to the Justice Web Reports Module with revenue not to exceed $500 through December 31st, 2022. 19 is authorizing a Facility Rental Agreement with Sinclair Community College for the Fatherhood Initiative Banquet in an amount not to exceed $11,587.45. 20, extends the agreement with Prudential Insurance Company of America for the group life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, supplemental life insurance, and short-term disability insurance through December 31st, 2022. 21, extends the service agreement with Rumpke of Ohio Incorporated for scrap tire recycling services for the Environmental Services Department through January 31st, 2023. 22 is a request to solicit requests for proposals for the 2022 Styrofoam EPS Partnership Project for the Environmental Services Department. The next one authorizes agreements. 23 is with City of Dayton, acting as the fiscal agent for the Dayton Municipal Court to provide an electronic home detention program for the county municipal courts in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through December 31st, 2022. And 24 is Schlotman Enterprises to provide file management services for the facilities management department in an amount not to exceed $9,900 through March 17th, 2022. And the last two are authorizing sole source purchases. 25 is with Azteca Systems LLC for City Works for annual software maintenance and support for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $113,400. And finally, Resolution 26, Greater Dayton RTA for bus passes and project mobility tickets for non-emergency transportation services for the Department of Job and Family Services in an amount not to exceed $1350,000.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 0027, accept the subdividers contract from Welsh Kettering LLC for the Valley Thrift Development. 0028, accept the 20% letter of credit for the springs at the Villages of Winding Creek Development, Section 5, in the amount of $62,134.60. 0029, reduce the performance bond by 80% for the Washington Glen Development, Section 3, in the amount of $70,113. Resolution 0030, release the 25-foot easement through property belonging to Brent Hawk and record the same. The following two are to accept easement deeds for water lines and record the same. Resolution 0031, Kettering Self-Storage Investors LLC in connection with the development of Kettering Self-Storage. 0032, with Walsh Kettering LLC in connection with the development of Valley Thrift. The final two are to approve the plan specifications, estimated costs, and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities. First is Resolution 0033, Central Station Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $252,631. Last one is Resolution 0034, Dryden Road Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $610,000.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Human Services?
Thank you. I have three items under Job and Family Services. The first is number 35. It will authorize an interagency agreement between Children's Services Division and the Sheriff's Office for Criminal Justice Information through December 31st of 2022. And the next two will authorize agreements to provide eligibility referral and support services with funding reimbursement in actual amounts of 50% of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31st of 2022. 36 is with the Ohio Healthcare Association, and 37 is with the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board. Then I have one item under Stillwater Center. It is number 38. It will authorize an agreement with Dr. Amita R. Patel, doing business as the Institute for Psychiatric Education, for psychiatric services and consultations in an amount not to exceed $15,600 through December 31st of 2022.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And under County Commissioners, we have one resolution, 22-0039, which appoints Randall Caldwell to the Montgomery-Green County Local Emergency Response Council for an unexpired term through August 9th, 2023.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, comments by citizens, I have one. Yvonne Carrington. Obviously, you state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Yvonne Carrington. I reside at 250 Trailwoods Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45415. I'm here not as a representative of any group that I am a member of, but as a private citizen and a registered nurse who is concerned about the situation that continues to go on at the county jail. I saw Rob Strepp take Channel 7 on a tour, mini-tour, through the jail recently, and it was appalling to see that inmates had to be moved because the roof's leaking and water's dripping down the walls. That's a public health hazard, and it is even more of a hazard when you have to move people into already crowded areas. I spent, well, the Justice Committee was formed in March of 2017, and I participated in that committee for 20 months before they closed it to the public the last four months or so because they said they weren't making decisions any longer. As far as I'm concerned, the report out from the consultant didn't tell us anything that we didn't already know, which is there wasn't enough staff, there wasn't enough education of the staff, and they were dangerous. The jail was dangerous in places, especially the old jail. Then, since then, we've been waiting. It'll be five years since this process began in March of this year, in two months, and nothing's changed. I know that it's hard. I know that $200 million is a lot of money, and you can't come up with it. I got that. We recently had a situation at our house where we had to have a sewer line fixed, and it cost us $14,567. We couldn't just write a check for that. So, I get it, but you have to figure it out. We couldn't just say, "We can't do it. We let it go. We can't fix it." It had to be fixed. So, I want to know, transparency here, guys. What are your plans? What are you looking to do? How are you proposing to move forward? I know you can't build a new jail, but there has got to be things that can be done to alleviate the situation down there. During COVID last year, they managed to decrease the population of the jail significantly, so maybe they should do that again. I know that Deb Decker said in her Facebook post that cash bail reform's not in your purview, but some of those things have changed. I'm running out of time. I got a lot more that I could say, but I want transparency. I want to hear what your plans are and how you're going to move forward and to resolve this issue. These are human beings, and they need to be treated like human beings. And if it was somebody you knew or a part of your family, you would be upset. You wouldn't want that. So, please, I'm asking, to give us some idea of what your next moves are going to be. You didn't have the meeting, Michael, that you promised in January to give us the details. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Yvonne. Do you want to respond?
Yvonne, we just released the report to the public in December. Our plans are to continue to make capital improvements to the existing jail so that we can fix the repairs necessary that the sheriff has supported. We built that into the budget. Commissioners have approved that budget, so we'll be making millions of dollars of repairs to the existing structure. And we'll continue to find ways that we can make enhancements and modernizations until we get to next steps. The price tags that we got from HDR was quite the sticker shock, especially in this environment. So, we're not going to rush to move on anything right now. We're going to table this until we have an opportunity to talk with our state and federal partners on next steps. That will take some time. Building a jail is not something that happens overnight. It's a six-to-seven-year project, and we can't do it without support from our state and federal partners, which we are engaged in now. Once we start to put a strategy around this, then we will have engagement. And it is our goal to pull together stakeholders on that. But we are working very, very diligently. The Commission also approved, in the recent budget, an expansion of electronic home monitoring, which is the largest expansion we have. Those kind of steps are things that we can control that allow people that have been sentenced to the jail to serve their time outside of the jail. So, as a community, we continue to work on this. Again, it's not something that happens overnight. We recognize the existing structure is not good. All of us do, which is why we started down the path five years ago, and which is also why we didn't want to throw that whole process out the window. Additionally, this process was somewhat slowed down by COVID. But now that we're in it, and we've had the conversations with the state, the Commissioners have lobbied heavy for continued funding to modernize jails across the state of Ohio. We have some 57 counties that need somewhat, some level of jail modernization. So, we'll keep you looped as this situation evolves, but this is not something that happens very quick.
Can I just add, Michael talked about lobbying the state. This next year, the County Commissioners Association, this is our number-one issue. Because, I mean, some of the counties have built. Warren County just built a new jail. Green County's willing to build a new jail. So, there's 57 of us, and, you know, the administration understands that. Granted, they can't give us, you know, bill. I wish they could, but they're not going to give us billions and billions of dollars to do this themselves. One of the things that's been talked about is modeling after the school's facility plan years ago, perhaps, and then that was like a partnership between the jurisdiction, the school district, and the state. So, the state gets it, right? And to talk about the things that the sheriff went through, and yeah, it's horrible. But as Michael said, we're investing every year because we want to make sure it's safe, not just for those guys back there, which we care a lot about. Well, they're not corrections officers, but you know what I mean. But for the inmates as well. And I will say this, that the numbers have been down. They aren't what they were at the peak, well, I'm not going to say the peak of pandemic because here we are. But, you know, early on, when it was down 400 or so, that's when everybody was shut down. I mean, nobody was doing anything, right? So, now, but the numbers have stayed low, and that's in part because of the judges, in part because of the sheriff and his team. But the numbers are lower, and I think as every year, until we get the new facility or whatever we're going to end up doing, retrofitting, whatever, we're going to continue to invest for safety. And, you know, we've been very fortunate that COVID hasn't become rampant in our jail because I was just talking to somebody in Cuyahoga County, and they had to call in the National Guard because they had corrections officers, you know, 2/3 of their corrections officers were out. So, it's not defending the facility as it is now. We are aware of how critical this is, and we wish we could wave a magic wand and have it done next year. It's just not going to be. We cannot, you know, talk about sticker shock, you know, to see $200 million. We were like, "What?" So, we will be as transparent as we can, as we have been, I believe, with you. Told you everything we know. The report is out there online. And so, it's where do we go from here? I think it's all of us together. The New Jail Committee, their title, I can't think of right now, but all of us, working together. Because we get it. All four of us get it. The sheriff gets it. So, we just want to make sure this is done right. This is a one-time thing in our lifetime, so we want to make sure it's right. But thank you. And thank you for always being concerned, Yvonne, and being a voice of reason. And I'm smiling behind my mouth. Thank you.
All right, I've received other requests to make comments. The first one, Ariana Brooks. Please come up, state your name, address, and you will have three minutes.
Ariana Brooks, 3841 Carroll Avenue, Apartment 4, Dayton, Ohio. I know that you guys probably think that we are here as rebels, just looking to make progress, but here is my question to you. What would you be willing to do for your children? We, as new parents, saw an issue and sought help for our child. We did the right thing, and now we are being punished for that, despite proving in court that we did not hurt our children. Medical experts testified to this, and the purpose of experts is to get to the truth. Case workers are not experts and therefore are unqualified to say that the testimony of our experts is null. They should not be able to overrule the law when they are proven wrong. The magistrate ruled that the state did not prove abuse and ordered our twins home on November 24th. Why are they not home? This is wrong. This is inhumane, and this is traumatizing. This is the most painful feeling that will never go away. It is exhausting. I am tired. Imagine having to fight every day for eight months straight. We have done everything that the state has asked of us. We trusted the process. We complied with the case plan set forth, and still, we do not have our children back. What more can we do? At this point, I am begging you guys to look past politics, look past your jobs, look past your colleagues, and look inward. As a parent, what would you do? It feels like the system is trying to break us, and we will not break. I will fight for my children because I am a mother first and foremost. I want my children back, and I want them back now. In the words of our mayor, MEMS, all Dayton residents should feel that they are treated with dignity and respect. The way we are being dehumanized and tortured does not show dignity or respect for your organization to us, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cara Woods. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
All righty. Hello, I am Cara Woods. My address is 2116 Bliss Road, Fort Worth, Texas, and I am here in support of the Brooks family. So, I flew here from Texas because I've been a social worker for over 12, 13 years. I have trained other social workers to be social workers under my license, and I know what abuse and neglect looks like. After thoroughly investigating this case, I knew that it was important to come here and be in support of this family. On November 23rd, Magistrate Lockman heard this case. There was a trial, and both the prosecuting office under Child Protective Services presented their case and the Brooks family attorney. Like Ms. Brooks stated, the medical experts testified on their behalf what was actually happening with the children, and it was not abuse, and it was not neglect. On November 24th, an order by Magistrate Lockman was put in place for these twins to be returned home to their family immediately. I want to remind you that the case plan for this family also states reunification. Here we are in January, a new year, and these twins are not home. I do not understand. I am a mother of four, and like I said, I've been doing social work, not casework, actual social work. Worked for major universities all over the state of Texas and North Carolina, and I do not understand what is happening in your city. Why are these twins not home when a judge has ruled that they have not been abused and neglected, yet CPS is refusing to return them home? Does that not sound like kidnapping to you? So, my question, again, is what is going to happen so that this family can stop being traumatized? They have not broken the law. They sought help for their children when they took them to the hospital. They proved their case, and they followed the case plan that was set by. They have completed everything that was asked of them. They have done it in a timely manner. Again, have not broken the law and have spent thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars, proving their case with an attorney. But the children are not home. They get two hours a week. When I walked in here, we started out by saying, "What a beautiful room we're in." Yet, this family has to visit their children for two hours a week in a small, tiny room. How is that beneficial for a family? And if these were your children, again, what would you do? I have four. I would go to great lengths for mine, especially if I didn't do anything wrong. I am asking you to do whatever it is in your power to return these twins home because, again, an order is in place for them to be returned home. Follow the law. Do what is right. Stop traumatizing your citizen.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amanda Wallace. Please state your name, address, and three minutes.
Amanda Wallace, 3905 Jack Pond Court, Greensboro, North Carolina. So, I'm with Operation Stop CPS, and our mission is to help families like the Brooks, you know, advocate and use their voice. And as I look at each of you today, I'm just so confused. I'm confused at why you believe that you have more power than the people. This was the first building that I came to when I came from North Carolina, and I've spoken to you, Mr. Kelly, right? I've requested to have a meeting with all three of the Commissioners to come to a resolution, and yet, we still have not had a meeting. See, we believe in fact, and right here, we have the court order that says the prior order granting interim temporary custody to Montgomery County Job and Family Services, Children's Service Division is terminated. Terminated, meaning that this county is holding these children illegally at this very moment. These children are in your custody illegally when we have that the order has been terminated. It says here, "Based on the evidence presented at trial and for the reasons stated on the record in open court, at the close of the trial, the court finds that the agency has not, established by clear and convincing evidence, evidence that these children are abused." And then it states the law. And so, I've worked with CPS for over 10 years, and so I know when papers come across your desk, you don't know the family. You don't know the children, which is why we have these parents standing right here in front of you so you can see them for yourself with your own eyes. Why would they be fighting so hard if they're sitting here abusing their kids? Why would they be doing this? I've read each and every one of you guys' bios on the website. You are all parents. You have grandchildren. What would you do? What would you do if somebody ripped your children out of your life, and then when you prove that you haven't done anything, you still can't have them home? This family has missed Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's. For what? I talked to you, and you told me that CPS comes to you, that you oversee this department, but you can't do nothing? They report to you directly. You oversee the budget. You oversee the staff, but you can't do anything? I'm confused. I think that I counted about 11 people sitting on this side of here, but we have a petition that has 1,045 people in support of the return of the Brooks twin to their parent. And I want to present it to you guys today and remind you that you do not have more power than the people, and we're not going anywhere until these babies come home.
Can I give this to you? Thank you. Our next speaker, Allison Youngblood.
I'm new at this. I'm, uh, Allison Youngblood, uh, one eleven Livingston Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, four five four oh three. Um, I'm new at this, and, um, just like she said, I'm not going away. You know, I'm a mother. I have eleven kids. I'm here for the Brooks family. I have thirty-three grandkids. I was asked to sit in on this trial. I hadn't even really heard anything about it. So as I'm sitting there, listening to it, hadn't heard anything, I'm sitting there, and I'm like, listening to the doctor, because the first thing that I came in, I was the doctor. I'm looking at x-rays, and less than five minutes into what the doctor was saying, I wanted to jump up in the courtroom and like, why? Um, why the F aren't these kids home with their parents? So I sit there through the remainder of the trial. I listen to the guardian at Lightem. I'm looking at the parents. I'm looking at my surroundings and people that I had dealt with before, because Children's Services are treacherous, and they need to be shut down, period. They mess with the wrong people. They take the wrong kids from the wrong people, period. It's always been like that. And what I always say about Children's Services, either they're gonna get messed up, or they're gonna get screwed, period, point blank. And that's what I mean. There's no reasoning that these babies should not be home with their parents. They're literally in a cage, you might as well say, and be, they, they have to have the door open in a room with glass, while people are sitting there peering at them with their babies. Their babies have been abused in a home. They didn't, there, there was a parent that didn't even want them to, to go to doctor's visits with them. What kind of system are y'all running here? And you know, and, and, and that was in your face too. So like I told her the other day, you work with Children's Services. It ain't over. You work with them. You know, get these babies home. This isn't right. Y'all, yeah, and, and I'm not going nowhere. I don't care what platform that I have to use. I, I'm, I'm gonna be in the city commission meetings regardless of whether y'all listening or not, because it's being recorded. Somebody is gonna listen. Somebody's gonna listen. Y'all can't keep taking our babies, taking people's babies like this. Take the, take the ones that need to be taken. Like I said, a guard, if a guardian at Lightem off top, anything that a guardian at Lightem says, that means they, that them babies needed to be home. They should have been home with their parents. They missed first crawls. They've missed everything. You know, what, I mean, what does it take? What is, what is it gonna take for you people to listen? I have, I, I wish somebody, I wish somebody would. Like I said, I've been through a lot. I wish somebody would. Any of my grandbabies, anything. I'm gonna be on y'all doorstep, period. And I'm gonna be the same way for this, these parents right here. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. And our final speaker, uh, Dante Brooks.
My name is Dante Brooks, thirty-eight forty-one Carroll Avenue, four zero five four zero five, four five four zero five, I'm sorry. I'm the father of Amir and Anaya Brooks. They was taken from us June first, twenty twenty-one. It is the first month of twenty twenty-two. And we haven't had any change. We asked, we begged everybody to, anybody to help. All we got is, I can't do nothing. I came to you as a father, as a man. I begged you, sir, to please do something. I just want my kids back. Nothing more, nothing less. I know plenty of you have kids. I know it. Why? Why don't I have my kids back yet? We done everything. We went to court. We proved ourselves. We didn't hurt our kids. CPS looked in our face and said, no, they're not going home. What are we gonna do with that? I know you guys can, can do something. I know you can. Why haven't you? Why? Because I'm black? I don't have enough money? Why us? Why me? I'm a great father, man. I love my kids. Why me? We need to make a change. CPS is too powerful. They can do anything, and none of you guys say nothing about it. Nobody. There's so many fathers up here. I know it. What would you do for your kids? What would you do? I'm not going nowhere until I have my kids back. Nowhere. You will see this face, and to Anaya and Amir Brooks is back in our custody, period. I know y'all can do something. Please, do something. Please, today.
Thank you. A comment by our county administrator.
Thank you, commissioners. I have a couple of comments. First, um, I wanna thank you for coming and making your, your comments. It is not that, uh, the board or the administration, um, does not want to be helpful. The reality is, state law does not give us the power over custody. We do not control that. That is controlled exclusively by the courts. The child welfare system is the end result of the courts. And that is the truth. And there's nobody in this room, uh, that has the power to make those decisions. Commissioners.
Well, thank you, Michael. And I, and I think, um, that we've heard, we've heard about what the magistrate said, but I, but I think you also all know that Judge Keesey stayed there. And so, I mean, it's not that no one didn't hear this, know about it. It is with the court now, again. And so, while we wish it wasn't, uh, the way it is right now, that's what it is. And we are not, I mean, we're not pushing, pushing it off on anybody else. This is, as Michael said, this is the law in Ohio. And that juvenile court judge made the decision he made to stay it. And, and that means to hold, to hold it, to stop Marshall Lockman's opinion and order. So that's where we are right now. I mean, and again, we're not trying to brush this off, or, or we hear you. I mean, we do all have children. My heart breaks for what's happening. But we are not, we're, we're not the arbiter of this. We just, we aren't. And I'm glad that you were able to come here and have your voices heard. I think that's very important. And I, I, I know you're shaking your head, but I don't, judges are independently elected. And we are not, we're not the judges of it. So, um, thank you. Really, seriously, thank you for coming here and, um, letting us hear from you. It was important. Thank you.
Commissioners, I have additional comment. Um, I don't know if you know from the front page of the paper today, um, but the workforce team is doing just a fantastic job in trying to recruit, uh, both for individuals that are retiring and try to get back in, or young people that are trying to get in the job market or job training. And, uh, one of the ways we do that is at our new Employment Opportunities Center that's in, uh, Northwest Dayton. Uh, we had an opportunity to do a hiring event for Fuya Glass America. Fuya Glass is looking for over five hundred associates. And, uh, they made forty-six job offers right there on the spot. So this is one of the ways, commissioners, and you've, you've continued to put resources behind, uh, job training for young people, job training for adults, job training for youth, and trying to move more and more people into the market. Uh, give our retirees an opportunity to come back if they don't wanna stay retired. And this is the way to do it through job training, and our new center, uh, is recruiting for businesses in the community. So thank you, commissioners, and this was a great opportunity for us to partner with Fuya. And it was also a great opportunity, uh, for us to get more people into the job and employment market at great benefit. So thank you.
Thank you.
I understand it was a wonderful turnout for the Fuya event, uh, last week, and I understand what forty-some offers were made, so.
That's great.
That's great.
Absolutely.
They got a lot of jobs to fill, though. Isn't it like a thousand they're looking to fill?
I think he's looking to hire about five hundred.
Okay.
Okay, that's a start.
Yeah.
So that's a start.
Right, to start, and then he has said up to a thousand.
Up to a thousand, yeah, so.
We gotta get people there.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And, um, just sort of a shout out to all of our Montgomery County residents. You only have three weeks to get your dog license. So these are so important, because if something happens, your dog wanders off or something, if you, they've got that license on, that you know that's a ticket home for them. So, uh, the, the licenses can be purchased online and several other locations throughout the community. And just look on the county auditor's website, uh, for those sites and any other details, and that, and that is mcoi, mcohio.org.
Well, speaking of dogs, which we like.
We always like to talk about our dogs.
First of all, today, we were able to, Carolyn and I were able to go out to the sheriff's, um, what do they call that facility? The, the one out on Infirmary.
Infirmary Road.
Um, anyway, I'm looking at deputies like, what they call, thank you, the substation. And the substation is also the home of the canine office. And, um, we were able to join our county auditor, and there were departments, so Dayton was there, Montgomery County Sheriff's Department was there, and Miami Spur, all had their canine dogs there. Uh, total of ten dogs. I think there's twenty-two in the county, but we had ten dogs there, not all in the room at the same time. They came in one at a time. But, um, Carl gave them all, um, dog licenses for free, and, and as we said at, at the time, it's the least we can do. But it was really fascinating to hear some of the stories of each of these dogs that has a different background from different parts of Europe, some from Germany, some from Croatia. Um, and they're, they're just really unique. Each one of them, you could see the different personality and how they work with their handler. And, and what they do. So some are bomb dogs, some are drug dogs, some are just patrol dogs, not just, but patrol dogs. And then some are, um, they find people. And that was just, it was really great, and it was really, uh, the least we can do, um, give these dogs. Not that they're gonna get away from their handler, probably, but, uh, you know, give them those tags and to really celebrate and, and honor those, those deputies. So that was fun. Um, we've also recently had several donations to our Animal Resource Center, including gifts in honor of the late Betty White. Uh, I think everybody knows she was just an animal advocate, and she has a foundation, and so it was nice to be able to get those, um, donations in honor of her. And we've had quite a bit of social media traffic, uh, around the Betty White Challenge. So people are encouraged to donate five dollars to an animal shelter or rescue on Betty's birthday, which is coming up on, uh, January seventeenth. So that's really, that's very special. Um, please consider supporting our ARC or any of our rescue partners on, on next Monday. We go through a lot of supplies, as you can imagine, with being at capacity of a hundred dogs. Um, they go through so many supplies, and it's, it's really nice that this is a way people can help and contribute, even if they don't have a dog. They may wanna, you know, give something, and so we're really happy that we're a part of that Betty White Challenge.
Thank you. And just to wrap things up, so, um, kind of changing gears, um, I had the great opportunity, um, to, uh, join, um, at our Styrofoam recycling event this past Saturday at the Activity Center Park in Centerville. And this is the fourth Styrofoam collection, and it was by far the most successful one. Um, they counted four hundred and seventy-one cars that came by in the, uh, four hours that the event took place. And, um, we absolutely, um, overstuffed both of the, it had a huge semi, as well as a, a large truck as well, and they were all stuffed to the limit, and the, um, Activity Center actually took, as people kept dropping off, they put it in their garage to be, uh, done. And all of the Styrofoam comes down to, it's mostly air when it's all said and done, and by the time they reprocess it, it's a very small amount, which we care deeply about, because it doesn't belong in our landfill. Uh, we remove the, um, Styrofoam, that leaves such much more room for those products that belong in the landfill. So, um, I wanna just, Matt, be sure to convey to your team and Environmental Services, all the employees who made this happen. I tried to, the ones that I saw there. Um, but thank you for all they do to set that up and then man it, and then make sure it gets to the, um, facility down in Mason, uh, where they reprocess. I also wanna publicly thank Centerville, Washington's, um, uh, Township's Park District, because they are a wonderful host to that event. And also the Boy Scouts, and there were some girls too, so I don't know if they were Girl Scouts, but there was Boys and Girls. And they've been there both times at Centerville, and it's wonderful. Um, many of them look like they'd been in the snow, because they were covered with Styrofoam, uh, uh, you know, just debris. So, um, it is a huge success. Uh, it was the most successful one. Uh, I said it before, and I'll say it again, do not bring food containers. They can't accept, um, you know, like the things you get from restaurants and whatnot. If you've had food in it, it's contaminated, and they can't put that through their machinery. So don't bring those kinds of Styrofoam. But everything else, save it up. The next event will be April twenty-third at the Rose Music Center parking lot up in Huber Heights. So we've had, this was our fourth event. We try to move it around the county, so everyone can, um, take advantage of it. And, uh, just put that on your calendars. That is it for today. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, January eighteenth, at one thirty PM, in this same room. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.